They saved everything for me.
Councilman Cooper.
Here.
Councilman Cooper.
He's here.
Councilwoman Nazer.
Here.
Councilman Rodriguez.
Here.
Council President Saddlebrook.
Here.
Please rise and make stand.
We're using to the flag, United States of America, and to a republic which stands one nation, one liberty, and the principle of liberty and justice for all.
I like that. I'd like to have a moment of silence.
Not yet.
For Lorraine, what are her please? Thank you. At the notice of this meeting is presented by council members in July 4, 2003, to all legal newspapers in accordance with provisions of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975, before we open the meeting to the public. Mayor?
Can I just have a few minutes? The Senator's not here yet. He should be on his way.
Okay.
Hope we could just refer.
Sure. Before we open the meeting to the public.
Hello.
Say, one favor?
Aye.
Anyone who should be heard.
Peter Ponzos, 608 North Midland Avenue. Good evening, hello. The flood in my backyard. I'm just wondering where we stand with that. This year, as you know, we've had more than enough rain. I've had three months of 10 inches of water in my basement. It found its way through the cracks in my floor. I had to get a sump pump put in with a French drain. That was this Thursday night, which cost me $4,000 to do. I don't know what to do anymore. It's gotten to be totally ridiculous. I understand we've had a lot more rain than normally, but now it's coming in the house. Now it's, hopefully the house won't get bothered anymore by it, but John and I, and I think the previous engineer and a gentleman from Fairlawn walked it back. We know where the pipe runs, the easement from my backyard. We have to get that stream dredged, in my opinion. I know you're working on a program. I know Fairlawn's got, I think, a $2 million program in progress, but it all comes down to, I think, that stream being dredged, for my problem anyway.
Okay.
I just want to know where we are with it, you know, or anywhere.
Did you say someone from our Jerry's office looked at it or no?
No, that was the other engineer.
This is, this is a year ago.
Okay.
You know, I mean, I know we had a lot of rain this year, believe me, and I haven't bothered you since, believe me. I've had the flood in the backyard, it's totally out of hand. It's gone down, but this year, because of so much, came up through the cracks in my floor. My, my house is from 1940. There's nothing I could do about it.
Okay.
I had to get the French drain put in.
Just to expedite it, I mean, if there was no objection, can authorize Jerry maybe go out to your home, take a look at it.
That's great.
Then obtain the reports from the other engineering firm and then...
I've got the map of my property with the easement on it I could give him.
You can read that with Jerry.
And I got the pictures again, all that junk.
Jerry also to explain to him just what's all going on there with the drains coming from Fairlawn, so on and so forth. I give no...
You know what I mean?
Is that satisfied?
Yeah, that's fine, Joe. That's why I'm not here to, you know, bust into it.
No, I just wanted to make sure that I get all the guys, and I just want it to more than that.
I appreciate it.
No, you should have to see him.
Thank you.
I'd just like to take a moment, please. I'd like to turn over to the mayor, he has a presentation.
Thank you. This is on, right? I'd just like to take a moment to announce that, of course, Saddlebrook applied for and got $400,000 in discretionary aid, extraordinary ordinary aid, and it is extraordinary because of the help of our senator and our assemblyman in the 38th District, Senator Joe Caniglio. I know Joe and I have spent many times on the telephone and lobbying the people down in Trenton to get as much money as we can possibly get here for Saddlebrook. And it's extraordinary when you have a senator who really adopts a township like he did here in Saddlebrook. Not only does he help Saddlebrook, but he helps the other towns in the 38th District. I have the pleasure of knowing Mr. Caniglio, and he has worked tirelessly for Saddlebrook. Not only for, for our aid, for the $400,000, but also there is a referendum that's going to be put on the ballot in November for $200 million, and I know there are some of you in this audience here that brought this up last meeting, and I'm talking about the flooding that we've had here in Saddlebrook. Of that $200 million, there's 25 million of it that is going to be earmarked strictly for Bergen County, and that is through the efforts of Senator Caniglio. And I want to really take this opportunity, Senator, to express our gratitude to you for your hard work in getting us the money that you had gotten us here, and your efforts on the state budget in general. I invite you up, say a few words, and I think you have something for us.
I do. Thank you. Scoot my back, gentlemen and ladies. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, members of the council, Mayor Domenio, and residents of Saddlebrook. I'm delighted to be here this evening to present the check to the borough of Saddlebrook in the amount of $400,000 in extraordinary aid. This mayor and council inherited a budget deficit, which, the impact of which on the residents of this community would have been really heartfelt. So I'm very happy that your mayor contacted me with his concerns, and I was able to work with the state and your mayor and the council to provide the need for tax relief to the citizens in Saddlebrook. It's because of your mayor's efforts and his diligence that we were able to pursue and receive this grant. Mayor, I want to present this to you because you've been working tirelessly over the last six months, being a new mayor in the borough. It hasn't been easy, and to walk into office and to be faced with the deficit that each of you has faced, I think the impact was, was great on everyone, and to ease those burdens, and I want to thank you and congratulate you and the members of this council for their foresight and their ability to want to help the citizens of this community. So it is my pleasure to present to you this evening a check in the amount of $400,000 for extraordinary aid to the borough of Saddlebrook. Closing, Mayor, members of the council and residents, I would just like to say, I am truly a pleasure for me to present this check this, this evening to you. It was an honor to help you, and I would just like to let all the residents of this community and this mayor and council know, whatever help and assistance that I can be to the borough of Saddlebrook in the future, please do not hesitate to ask. I thank you very much.
Thank you, Senator. Thank you again, Senator. Just one more minute. This is a good day for Saddlebrook. It truly is a good day for Saddlebrook in many respects. We have gotten $400,000 in aid to help us defray the tax increase, or any taxes here in the township, and it's very frustrating for me as mayor, and not many of you know that we, coming into office in January, has faced a $800,000, $880,000 deficit coming in, and no surplus. That's what we were faced with when we came into office in January. This certainly helps in reducing the tax rate here in Saddlebrook, and I'm very grateful to, to the senator, and there are those that talk the game and produce nothing, but there are those that talk and take action to go along with it. It's also a good day for us here in Saddlebrook because Saddlebrook is moving forward. We are now, after tonight's meeting, going to start the gear, put the wheels in motion for a new police department. A police department that I feel is in desperate need. Since 1942, when that police department was first established or built, it is in disrepair. Our police officers do an excellent job under adverse conditions. I did speak to the senator, again, hoping we can get a few more dollars through the Home Security Act and any other grant and state, federal money we can get, and I know he's helping us on that road also. It is a good night, and I have to thank my colleagues on the town council who have supported me in this. Not any one person does this alone. We have a vision. We know where we want to go for the township, and when we all get together and we put our heads together and we try to make that vision become a reality, Saddlebrook benefits. And this is government at its best. We have police officers that are in the attendance tonight. They're all good police officers, and they deserve some good working conditions. And I invite any of those who doubt whether or not we need a police department to, I extend that invitation, I, I said in the newspaper, to come down and take a visit, and you'll see why we do need a new police department. And I do want to thank my colleagues, the council president and the rest of the council members, for supporting me on this vision that we have for Saddlebrook. To them, I say thank you, and to the citizens of Saddlebrook, you are going to benefit tremendously as a result of this. Thank you so much, Mr. President.
Senator?
Yes?
Just one second. I personally would like to thank you, and I don't know how many thank yous I can tell you for helping the town in this desperate situation that we are. $400,000 is a lot of money, especially with the crisis that the state is going on, and I have to be grateful to all the job that you just put in Trenton to get us this money. My understanding is that last year, the whole district, 38, which is your district, just got $300,000 overall. This year, you got $1.3 million, being our town one of the highest recipients on state aid. Even though that is not exactly what the residents are looking for, because we are looking at big tax increase in town, it will help us a lot. So thanks again, and keep on doing the great job, and hopefully this will be now, just this year, but hopefully next year we'll have some state aid also. Thank you very much, Senator.
Senator, I would also like to thank you for your hard work with the community, and I know that the people in the future will be looking forward to our river being dredged so we can stop a lot of the flooding that's happening in town, and continue your hard work. Thank you for helping the town and thank you for helping the residents.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Senator, if there's no one else, I just would like to say also thank you very much for your efforts in the town, and more importantly, your efforts with the dredging of the river. I have contacted your office in the past to reach out to you, to commend you. It's a need that's watched by everybody in this town. We would devastate along the other, half along the river, and every effort by you and your office is much appreciated. Thank you very much.
Senator, we appreciate the $400,000, but please don't stop there. We need more. Thank you.
No problem. Thanks, Senator.
Senator, thank you very much.
It was a pleasure.
Yeah, thank you.
Actually, I corrected. It's not the borough, it's the township, you said.
Joe, before you leave, don't... Did you see?
Before, did you see? I, I do have something on behalf of the township that we have for you. Because of your efforts, Joe, it's a small token of our appreciation from the town council and myself, a little paperweight here. You can put on all that cash that you're going to get us for Saddlebrook, but a, a little token of our appreciation.
We'll keep working hard, rest assured.
Thanks, Joe.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Meeting still open to the public? Anyone who should be heard?
Somebody else?
Somebody else?
Oh, who's winning?
I brought my calculator, so fasten your seat belts, huh? Okay. Good evening, Vic Cabrera, 590 Hickory Avenue. I don't know who this is. That's the US? Okay. Two things I want to discuss tonight, and the first one would be the police department new building. I toured that police department a couple times, and I can testify to the fact that it's inadequate, just to say the least. I mean, it's cramped, it's not too waste about it. Do we need a new police department? Absolutely. Should we build a new police department? Absolutely. Not too waste about it. Now, my question is, not do we need one, or should we build one, but the cost. You know, as, as you all know, I'm always worried about cost. Now, my question is, do we need to spend $2.1 million for a police department? I don't know. We may have to. We may have to spend more than that, but how do we come about that figure? That's, that's one thing that bothers me, really bothers me. Now, what do you need, what are the components that should go into a good, adequate, and functional police department? Well, first you have to have a good dispatch room, right? With the most modern communications and computer equipment. You should have that, right? You need at least two interview rooms, I believe. Should have at least two, all right? You should have two holding cells, at least, all right? You should have a fingerprint and photography room. You need that, don't you? Should be well-equipped, not too waste about it. You should have a good, secured evidence room to maintain the legal integrity and chain of command of evidence. You need that. You need a record room, right? To maintain the integrity of police records. You need that. You should have a, an emergency equipment room. That's where you keep the sledgehammers and the bolt cutters and the metal cutters and what have you, all the emergency equipment you may need to use. You, you need that. You need a secure firearm room, where you keep your rifles and shotguns and grenades, and somebody may include rocket launchers in there, but I'm not going to go that far, you know? You need that, okay? You need locker rooms and showers for the officers. You need a good conference room. You should, you should have that, right? Good conference room. You should have office space, a chief, a vice chief, the two captains, they should have their own offices, not too waste about it. And maybe the lieutenants should have their own, okay? You should have bathrooms. You should have, maybe nice to have, but not necessary things, like maybe a work, a workroom and maybe a kitchen, you know, you, you may have, include that in there also. Mr. Mayor, through the chair, of course, didn't miss anything?
I think you're up to $5 million.
No, you're not, you're not up to $5 million, and certainly, all of, all the items that you had mentioned plus have been addressed. The building is going to be approximately 10,400 square feet. Of that 10,400 square feet, probably about 8,000 square feet is going to be usable space for us to function out of. Many of the topics you brought up have been addressed. It's been very tediously gone over. Back in February, if you may recall, we did have an architect come down that specializes in police departments and spent some extensive time with this, the administrative staff of the police department and myself. So we have a vision of what we are looking to do with the police department. All of what you have said, and then some, have been addressed and are included in the development of the police department.
Okay. Now, the plan's called for a three-story building. If I'm, if I read the article correctly, is that correct? Three stories plus a full basement. That's actually in, in fact...
We're envisioning approximately a two-and-a-half to three-story building with a, about a seven-foot basement that we are looking at. How we develop the square footage, to answer your question, is that the professionals come in, the first thing they do is interview the personnel to see what the needs are of the police department or of the agency. Once they decide what the needs are, such as square footage, how big you need this and how big you need that, then they'll come up with a conceptual plan as to the type of building to be built, and that's the stage we're at right now. You will, within the next few months, and I've spoken with the architect Wednesday, Wednesday morning, who will now begin the process of giving us a visual plan to see what this building is going to look like so that the council, as asked for on Tuesday, can see and offer suggestions and input aesthetically and, and as far as what the building will consist of.
That brings me to a very important point now. Mr. Mayor, through the chair, again, and council members, you like people to come and establish their businesses in this township, don't you? It's good for the township for people to come in and establish themselves in business here, isn't it?
Yes, of course.
You all agree with me, right? Why then, may I ask, do we need to go to Maine to get an architect when we have an architect right next door to us over here, businessman in this township? That bothers me immensely, you know? Why do we have to go to Maine?
What's the difference? If they specialize in the correctional facilities and the police departments, they are one of the premier architects, in our view, that does this type of work. I'm not in this business to worry about whether I use this architect, that architect. I'm in the business of doing what is in the best interest of the community most effectively, what's going to be done correctly, what's going to be done, in my view, as a law enforcement officer, or retired law enforcement officer, who is still involved in the law enforcement field and security consulting field. This is my business. This is what I do, and I have no connection whatsoever with the agency up in Maine, except to know that they are the premier, one of the premier architects around the nation, and I saw some of their work at the conventions that we go to. I asked a lot of questions, and I was very pleased in their presentation. We presented that presentation to the council for discussion. This council is well aware of the architect and what they were going to do, and we did it. Whether or not we use one here from Maine or Oshkosh, as long as I can get the, the building built at a most effective cost and, and what's going to be better for the township, that's the direction we're going to go.
My, my question is, what is so mystical, so mysterious about a police department that, to me, if you have all the things that I gave you, and then you get our very able, one of the best, as a matter of fact, in the state of New Jersey, police chief, and his staff, and you decide over here, then you decide on the size of these particular components and the location of these particular components, right? That's called specifications.
If I can interrupt you for one moment.
Sure.
Are you for or against the police department?
Oh, absolutely. I'm extremely...
Okay, fine. Then bear with us. This is the best... If you trust me, and I don't care if you do or you don't...
I trust you, absolutely.
But if you trust me, this architect is going to be beneficial for Saddlebrook. Believe me when I say this.
Okay.
In the long run, you will get more than your money's worth from this particular firm.
All right, so if you say so, I'd be all for it, right? Okay, okay, because that was one of my main questions, you know, really. Why do we need to go to Maine when we have one right next door here? And he's a businessman, right in this community, you know? I mean, that, that bothered me immensely, believe me, all right? But, oh yes, I'm all for it. We need it. We should build it, but we must be careful that we just don't over, overextend ourselves money-wise, all right? All right. Okay, my next point, and... I want to... To talk tonight about your disgraceful and shameful action at the last meeting, all right? Now, let's go back to the preceding events, to your actions at last meeting. At the May meeting, if you remember, I prophesied that you would cut between $125,000 and $250,000 from the school budget, and then you called that a big victory. Remember? I prophesied that.
Yes, you did.
Right? Then about 10 months, 10 days later, I believe it was, thanks to Mr. Kugler, you had a meeting with the Board of Education, which was held here, because he insisted that the meeting was here. And good thing you did, Mr. Kugler, because you'd have been missed mid over there if you'd gone over there. I, I know that, all right? So, because he insisted, we had a meeting over here, remember? So the Board of Education came and they gave all the reasons why you shouldn't cut a single penny from the budget. You went into closed section, session, remember? And in closed session, you voted to cut $345,000. Am I right so far?
That's correct.
All right. So you came back and you informed the Board of Education that you was cutting $345,000, which they objected to, and they asked you to go back and reconsider, which you did. Once again, you went back behind closed doors and voted behind closed doors and came back, and you advised the Board of Education that you were standing firm on your vote. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So far. At which time, the Board of Education decided to, that they were not going to accept that, and they were going to appeal to the county, remember? Okay, one question for the attorney I made through the chair. Mr. Attorney, is it proper for the county, I mean, for the council, to take a vote at closed doors at a public meeting? Does that violate the sunshine laws?
Just let me clarify the procedure, how it's happened at the last meeting. Just because I don't recall off the top of my head.
Well, you wasn't here for that meeting, unfortunately, you know. I don't believe, I, was it? I don't think he was here for that meeting.
There was a discussion in the back room. The vote was taken here publicly.
No, no, the votes were taken back there, and you informed the Board of Education of your vote.
Excuse me, Mr. Cabrera. Yes, Mr. Kugler's correct. We went, we voted out here in public. What we discussed, if we're going to change our position, that was a different story. We never took a roll call vote in the back.
No, no, let me tell you what, exactly what happened, because I, I'm like an elephant. I don't forget anything, okay?
If that was the...
No, 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 this was exactly what, no, this is exactly what happened. They went behind closed doors, they voted, they came back and advised the Board of Education that you were taking a vote, and you were going to cut $345,000. The Board of Education said, "We don't agree. You went back behind closed doors and reconsidered your vote." Came back and said, "No, we standing fast on that $345,000." The Board of Education refused. They left. After they left, then you took a public vote, all right? That's when you took a public vote, not, not, not before, after the Board of Education had left here. And you took a public... No, that's, that's a fact.
When we, when we took a vote out here, and when we go into closed session, I can't tell you what we discussed, but we basically, is anybody gonna, does anybody feel differently? Does anybody want to change their mind? Not roll call vote. That's a vote. We didn't do that in the back room. We did the vote out here. I've never taken a roll call vote, myself or anyone that sits here in the back room. Discussion, votes out in public.
What he's saying is that we took, after the Board of Education left, and we took our vote.
Exactly, exactly what I'm saying. That's exactly when you took the, the, the public vote. You took after the Board of Education was out of here. Wasn't that why, Mr. Kugler?
Is that your, is that your question?
No, no, no. I, I want to know whether that's, that's, doesn't, does that violate the sunshine laws or doesn't it?
Well, all right, just, was that at that meeting or was this...
Through the chair for one second.
I was, I was not.
What happened was, after they refused it, they got up and walked out, not giving us a chance to take our vote.
That's a roll call.
No.
But you already had informed us your vote. You already had informed the Board of Education why you were voting, you said with $345,000 before you took a public vote. Isn't that right?
You're crossing hairs and it's wrong.
No, I'm not. No, I'm not.
Victor, Victor, I've been, I've been sitting here long enough to know that when you go in the back room, you discuss, and discussions were, if you're going to discuss it in front of everybody, then why, why even have caucus? You don't have to. It's as simple as this. It's legitimate. There was no violation of any sunshine law, if that's what you're gathering at. That vote was taken legally at a public session. Discussions in a back room, but nothing was illegal. So if you're hinting it's illegal, get off it, because it's not right.
I don't think, I don't think so, Ed, because like I said before, the Board of Education had already left, knowing that you had voted for the $345,000, because they already had refused it.
They knew our intentions, because we came out here with our intentions, but that doesn't matter, and I don't know what you're driving at. Say what you're driving at, because it's starting to get annoying that you're saying that we're doing something illegal.
Good, good, good.
Not good.
Oh, it's good for me. If I can annoy you, Ed, I'm doing fine.
You've got something to say, just say it. You got an accusation, accuse.
I am.
Accuse.
All right.
The meeting wasn't concluded though, correct? When the Board of Education walked out, it was still, it was still the open public meeting. So, the meeting was not ended, from what you're saying, and the vote was taken publicly. So I don't think there was a sunshine-
So you think it's legal?
Of course. From the procedures that have been described, I believe that there was no violation of the sunshine law.
Okay. All right. I'm going to accept that for the time being. I'm going, I'm going to do a little more research on it, because I'm really, I'm bothered by it, okay? All right. So then, you stood firm on $345,000. You made a liar of me, really, because I said that you wouldn't cut more than $250,000, and I was, I was pleased, all right? So the Board of Education goes to the county, right? Evidently, they were not anxious to go to the county. I wonder why. I tell you why not. Probably, because the county would probably make them open their books, which you did not have them open their books completely, you see? The county probably would have had. So what did they do? They come back over here to you at the last meeting, remember?
Yes, I know.
They got a letter, they said, "We will accept $230,000." With that letter, should have gone straight to the county, because they already had appealed to the county, you see?
Mr. Cabrera, I'm not sure, I can't answer what the board's intention was, whether they wanted to go to the county or they didn't want to go to the county, but all I can tell you is this, that the decision that we made, we made for the best interest of the town.
I don't think so.
I know, I know, you can't-
You monopolized the whole meeting over nothing.
I don't think so. Now, the point is that you had took fast on $345,000. Mr. Rodriguez came over with a beautiful colored rainbow chart, remember? Showing exactly why we should cut $345,000. And then you crumbled like a cookie, right? And you decided to go for the $230,000. You betrayed the people, you lied to the people, and you wasted the people's money. That's what you did. And then, the most shameful part of it is that you patted each other on the back, and congratulated yourself because you had wasted the people's money, because you had betrayed the people, and because you had lied to the people. Shame on you, each and every one of you, that's all I can say to you.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Cabrera. Anyone else?
John Gedrowitz, Colonial Avenue. I'm up here tonight because I cannot get any satisfaction from the Board of Education. I had an incident, I live across the street from Smith School, okay? And this is what pulled my chain, and I'm at the end of my rope, whatever you want to call it. On Tuesday, a pickup truck, and I didn't take his number on purpose, because I can't prove it, pulled up alongside my house, by my fence, the man and his son, how old, I don't know, went to the field, game was almost starting. 10 minutes later, and I'm not looking, I'm there, I can see over my fence, noticed them coming back. They stood behind the pickup truck and urinated on my, the father urinated on my tree, the son urinated on my grass.
Did you report that to the police department, Mr. Gedrowitz?
No, I didn't. Since then, I called and I spoke to Chief Kugler. But, I did, I was steaming, because this is the only act, now, this is not the only act that has been happening. My wife and I, when I say "me," I'm talking my wife and I, have seen many, many, many things wrong going on town-wise and/or Board of Education-wise. We turn our cheek, we don't want problems. I'm not a habitual complainer. I played sports, my daughters played sports, I love it. They belong there. I enjoy watching them play. But, the Board of Education should have rules and regulations and/or asking the people playing, watching, parking, to please respect the homeowner's property, okay?
Excuse me, Mr. Gedrowitz-
Now, I came, I was so furious, I went to the mayor's house, he wasn't home. I came here, mayor was busy, Peter Lidico was busy, but they, they saw me. They took time out to talk to me and advise me. I appreciate that very much. After that, I called Groveman, the superintendent. His secretary said, and I caught it. He was there, but he wouldn't talk to me. But he'd call me back later. He never called me back, okay? I'm furious, my wife is furious, okay? Now, I've reached the end, my wife has reached the end of our line. You can't say, "Why did you buy there?" My wife's been there 37 years before it was ever a field, okay?
Mr. Gedrowitz, if I could just interject for one second, please, with all due respect, we can assist you as far as any acts like that that happen to you, we can contact the chief of the police department and see if they can patrol certain times where there's a lot of activity, but as far as any sports that are played on the high school property, it is totally under their jurisdiction, there's nothing that we can control. I wish we could.
I'm aware of that, and I appreciate that, and I'm not here to bust you people, okay? I have been in touch with the Board of Education more times than I could ever count. In particular, Tony Achilles, who as far as I'm concerned, I can't say what I think of him, but, he's yessed me to death many times, saying, "You're right, you're right, you're right, we're going to do it, we're going to do it, we're going to take care of it, don't worry about it." He yessed me to death, and I walked out. Nothing done, okay? I called Groveman. She promised he'd call me back. It's two days, okay? What do I think of him? I don't know the man. I wouldn't recognize him. I don't think much of him, okay? The mayor, Peter, took time out. The chief called me back, I called him at police headquarters. He was busy. He called me back and discussed the situation with me. I appreciate that very much. I've reached the end of my rope, and I'm going to have to do something about it, Mr. Groveman. I want you to hear this. Anyone gets hit with a ball in my yard, and it's been close, I'm going to hold him responsible all the way. He knows the facts.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Anyone else?
Kevin Conovich, 268 North Boulevard, president of the Chamber of Commerce of Saddle Brook. I just wanted to make a couple of announcements regarding the chamber and some of the activities that's been going on, and some sponsorships that we've acquired. We will be erecting a Welcome to Saddle Brook sign that will be going up on, I believe, we decided Saddle River Road, graciously sponsored by Columbia Bank. We will also be erecting on the chain link fence at the community school, a community school sign that has been graciously sponsored by sealed air corporation. I met with the mayor and town council of Rochelle Park last night, and have pretty much finalized the merging of the two business communities of Saddle Brook and Rochelle Park. I offered to help them start their own chamber, they unanimously decided to just incorporate into Saddle Brook. So we'll be working with Rochelle Park, they look forward to working with the township and the chambers, the two business communities, and just furthering relationships between the two towns. There are a couple of events coming up. We will be participating in National Night Out, which will be on August 5th, at the municipal parking lot. It's going to be from 7:00 to 9:00. There's about 13 companies from within Saddle Brook and from outside pertaining to the event that will be attending. And that's about it.
Kevin, thank you very much for all your efforts, thank you.
Through the chair, if I could just comment too. Kevin, I just want to commend you for your efforts in the community. I hear nothing but good about the Chamber of Commerce, I support the Chamber of Commerce. I wish I had enough time in my schedule to attend some of those meetings, and I plan to attend those meetings. As you know, I attended the Career Day, I think last year, you had one again this year, which was, I thought, always a successful event. The chamber is something very important to the community, I support it. I ask all those who are watching here tonight to participate with the chamber, they are there to help the community, they have helped the community, and I know they are participating in the township picnic and other charitable events here for the township. So I do commend you and your organization, Kevin, and I so adamantly support it, 100%.
I just wanted to make one more point. I actually met with, in regards to the dredging of the river, I met with the county director of the Bergen County Parks, and it was made very clear that if we want anything done with that river, that we have to go through the Army Corps of Engineers, that pretty much their hands are tied, that there's no one that can help except them, that they are the final, pretty much, decision makers as far as what goes on with the river. So, I mean, to give us an idea of who we really need to be concentrating on, I should have said it when Senator Caniglio was here, but, is that true pretty much, or is there...
It's half true. It's the Army Corps of Engineers, the group that actually do the dredging, they have the plan, but it's the actual funding that's the most important.
The funding?
The funding.
I see. I'm sorry, if I could just through the chair, because I know Mr. Hanley is here, and that question came up many times. And what I want to emphasize, and when I said there's a referendum on the ballot in November for 200 million, Bergen County is going to get 25 million. With that 25 million, you're absolutely right, it is the Corps of Engineers, but with $25 million spread out throughout Bergen County, Saddle Brook is on the list along with those that really were affected by Hurricane Floyd, Tropical Storm Floyd. It's a tremendous victory for us, and just when we were last month discussing, where are we with this, we get this type of response from Senator Caniglio. It's very encouraging. Other towns now know that 25 million is coming, and they're jumping on board to help co-sponsor and support this bill that's coming out in November. But you're right, the Corps of Engineers does have the authority to do that. There are some issues with DEP and toxic material in some communities, those things are all being worked out, but the money, once the money gets in the bank in Bergen County, we'll be able to really take action on it.
And then, the last thing I just wanted to mention in terms of, in speaking with Rochelle Park, without forming one Chamber of Commerce, in case anyone hasn't noticed, the towns are pretty close together as far as where we live, let's face it. One side of the street is Garfield, Lodi could be across the street, and Saddle Brook's around the corner. Elmwood Park and Lodi has also, without forming one chamber, decided to pretty much regionalize things. So between the four towns, you're talking about a business community base of probably close to 3,000 businesses somewhere in the neighborhood of there, with many of them being publicly traded companies, so, I mean, there is a large business community here. I mean, come on, what's, towns what, 2.8 square miles maybe? And you have three major hotel chains here, so, it's for a reason. And, you know, Saddle Brook itself has close to 700 businesses. 63 of them do over $5 million in sales, so there's an enormous amount of commerce that comes out of this township, more than people think. It's not retail, it's manufacturers and corporate. And that's about the final point I wanted to make.
Joe, if I may, yeah? Kevin, I'd like to take this opportunity to also commend you, as being a member of the Chamber of Commerce, thanks to Kevin and his efforts of keeping at it. I've sat in a couple of his meetings, and I have to say, he truly has the best interests of Saddle Brook at heart, and I commend you for your time and efforts.
I too. Kevin, you forgot one thing tonight. We have a notice in our book here about the networking shop that's coming up.
July 16th, it's a multi, we belong to the Commerce and Industry Association as a Chamber of Commerce. We're one of seven chambers in Bergen County that belong to them. It's going to be a multi-chambered event. Basically, we're expecting probably about 300 business people from Fort Lee, the Bergen Hispanic, Hackensack, Fairlawn, Mawa, and the Commerce and Industry Association. So if there's any business owners in Saddle Brook that would like to attend and maybe have an opportunity to do a little business or find a new client, more than welcome, just contact the chamber. SaddlebrookChamber.com.
Thank you, Kevin. Anyone else?
Thank you. I just want to lead off by taking on behalf of the township to express our thanks to Interchange Bank for a great July 4th fireworks display. I thought it was great. I watched it from my bedroom window. I couldn't get down to the park because of personal problems I have at home, but I thought it was one of the best I've seen in a long, long time. And the people I talked to kind of agreed with me. So, on behalf of the township, to Interchange, thank you again. The new police department, I know you have it as a second reading, and I'd like to comment when that comes up, but I'd like to encourage the council, if I could at this point, to recognize the lowest interest rates in history are on the table. We need a police department. I've been there once or twice, I haven't had an extensive, I don't mean the misleasure, I haven't had an extensive tour through the department. I just went in there once or twice, and what I saw once or twice was enough for me to know, this facility is way outdated, needs replacement drastically, faster the better. We've got an excellent police department, we should keep it that way. You can't run an operation, keep them riled up if you're in dilapidated quarters or places that just don't function. So I urge you, whatever you're going to do on a bond referendum, to do it for the maximum you need, not the minimum you need. Take advantage of the lowest interest rates available to the township, you won't regret it, okay?
Thank you.
I hate to go back to it, but the flood plan that the mayor pointed out, naming me a few minutes ago, is still on my agenda, and I don't plan to leave it, get off my agenda. I'm very encouraged to see the $400,000 check and Senator Caniglio's interest in this thing. But what seems to bother me, and I don't know if it bothers other people as much, but I read in the paper just in the last week or so, should have cut it out, that's what I usually do, but I didn't, to find Pumpin' Lakes is getting X number of bucks and building a dam and all this kind of stuff to control their flooding situation up there, and we don't seem to be getting anywhere. To me, that's very discouraging. I come here tonight, and I'm a little bit more enthralled, you know? But we can't let, we can't let go of this, you know? Here's this young fellow sitting right here, just spent $4,000 for some pumps and trenching and everything else, and I hate to say it to him, but welcome to the club. We had, he's got 10 inches of water. We had five and a half feet, my neighbors had nine feet. Pouring out the living room windows, not their basement, the living room windows. And it's going to happen again. Now, I don't know whether his situation is related to sprawl or not, could be, I don't know his exact location. But ladies and gentlemen, we've got to stay on top of this, because this is a disaster, as I've said before, and I'll say it again, and I will burden you with it every time I get the opportunity, it's a disaster waiting to happen. And it's going to happen if we don't do something soon. I'll get off that for a moment.
If I can, before you continue?
Yeah.
It's no burden. Please come here every month, no pressure, and keep bringing it up, this way we, just we stay on top of it. It's that important of an issue.
Okay.
So we thank you for that.
Thank you, Joe. Last thing, and again, I'm on this all the time with you, and I hate to be redundant again, but the prescription drug plan. I understand your responses are coming in fairly well, I don't know exactly what the response ra- I don't know exactly what the response rate, and I don't want to burden you with that right now, but the reason for me bringing it up was to alert not only the council, the mayor and council, and the municipality. I urge all of you, people in this room, as well as the council, in your forming the prescription drug plan, to please pay attention to the prescription drug plan benefit that's going through the Senate and Congress at the present time. And the reason I raise that tonight is this. Senator Corzine just came out very, very recently and said that he and Senator Langenberg have found the need to submit an agenda, I'm sorry, an amendment to the proposed prescription plan to Medicare. In view of the fact that in their analysis of the proposal, it sounds great, what's been passed by the House and is now coming before the Senate, to add a prescription drug plan to the Medicare plan, but they found in their analysis, and they are quite correct, I might say, that that particular plan, as it now stands, will negate the New Jersey PPAD plan for seniors and the Golden Passport Plan for seniors by the year 2006. Now, I don't know if you understand totally what that means, but what it means is, is that if the plan goes through as proposed without the amendment, and the amendment is being fought by several local senators, particularly one in Pennsylvania, because New Jersey has the best senior plan throughout the country. You can now, the plan in the state of New Jersey right now for seniors that qualify, of course, you know, based on income and other requirements, requires the senior to pay no deductible, $5 per prescription, and so on. It's a remarkable plan, one of the best, if not the best, in the United States. The plan proposed, and a lot of seniors don't understand this, the plan currently finding its way through Congress and through the Senate will negate that plan and require them to go on a federal plan that will require them to pay not only a deductible fee, but a membership fee and a fee five times more than they're paying currently on the New Jersey plan. Okay? A lot of seniors think that this attachment to the Medicare Senior Benefit Plan is going to be a windfall for them. This may be the wrong platform for me to raise this, but I'm going to raise it anyway because it's the only way I can get my message out. In looking at this plan and researching what's happening with the current proposals versus the existing prescription plan, stay away from it. It's a disaster for the state of New Jersey unless something dramatic happens. I warn you to watch for it, be on your toes for it, and when you implement your municipal plan, watch how it's going to be affected by the federal plan. Because if the federal plan's going to step in and wipe it out, be careful, you know, be on your toes, be on the lookout for this, because there's an awful lot of smoke and mirrors going on, and that's not unusual in federal government. I don't have to tell you that. But all I'm telling you is, is that a lot of seniors across the country are being seriously, in my opinion, misled by what's happening between the bill proposed in the congressional side of the House and the Senate side of the House. Now those two parties are going to meet and decide to hack out their differences. Okay? If they hack out the differences and the plan that's on the table at the current time is not significantly modified, I warn all of you in this room, the dramatic impact that's going to have on New Jersey seniors.
Through the chair, if I could just elaborate a little bit on what you say, Mr. Hanley, you're absolutely right, but the New Jersey, what they did is they safeguarded themselves with, you're talking about the PPAD plan?
That's right.
The Senior Gold Plan and the State Plan, what Governor McGreevy did, and that was the problem down in Trenton with the so-called, the sin tax, I want to say, with the casino tax and the cigarette tax. That monies and revenues are earmarked for the protection of that prescription plan, and that was what the debate was a lot about with regard to that, to safeguard the prescription programs that we have here in the state of New Jersey. What you're talking about is a federal plan.
Right.
So it's a little different, although you're right. It's something to be looked at and to be concerned about, but certainly, New Jersey took steps by instituting that plan or that tax so that we can preserve the prescription plan for our seniors that we have in place now.
Yeah, but Lou, I think what you're saying is that what McGreevy did will only last until 2006.
I think there's a safeguard there to go beyond the 2006, but you may be right. I believe it goes beyond 2006, but we will.
Okay.
I know that's something near and dear to my heart, so it's something that I will be looking out for, and I know the council will also.
I hope it doesn't go through, to tell you the truth. Not, I mean, I hope something goes through federal-wise, but not under its current situation, because it's not going to help a lot of people that think they're going to get a big benefit, and it's not going to be there. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Evening, Andrewson Maluka, 202 Hayes Drive. I just saw two items on the correspondence, which are marked as receiving file. One was, I think it was Jerry with the Sampson Street property, some kind of change order, and another one was Boswell with Avon Park. So I just wanted to ask if you can give us an update as to what's going on with Avon Park and what's going on with the rec site on Sampson. And I'll sit and listen.
The two parks, Avon Park and Fifth Street Park, are going to be under renovation. Soccer fields are going to be redone, new baseball, softball fields, you know, new backstops, infield, shrubbery, that's as far as Avon and Fifth Street. That's the basic plan. We have the plan here if you'd like to see it. As far as Sampson Street, we're authorizing Jerry and his firm to basically go out and see what the property, how we can actually approach it, what's needed. Jerry, maybe you can elaborate more with it?
Right. There's a lot of different ideas on what should happen at that facility. We're going to do a conceptual plan to lay out a couple of different options, get comments from the council, and we'll proceed from there.
Thank you. Anyone else? Motion closed. Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. First ordinance, final reading, 1284-03. An ordinance to amend and supplement the code of the Township of Saddlebrook to amend and supplement Chapter 5 entitled Administration of Government and Chapter 33 entitled Police Department, so as to prescribe township residency requirements for municipal employees and police officers. Motion?
Go.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
An ordinance to amend and supplement the ordinance of the Township of Saddlebrook to amend and supplement Chapter 5 entitled Administration of Government and Chapter 33 entitled Police Department, so as to prescribe township residency requirements for municipal employees and police officers.
Motion?
Go.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, we should comment on this ordinance.
Motion closed.
Second?
Just a very quick question, Joe. As I understand this, and correct me if I'm wrong, this ordinance is going to require municipal employees to be town residents, is that correct?
No, it's, it's...
It's not.
No, it's residency requirement is going to be deleted so that police officers...
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Motion closed. Go. Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Be resolved by the Township Council of the Township of Saddlebrook that the ordinance entitled, "An ordinance to amend and supplement the code of the Township of Saddlebrook to amend and supplement Chapter 5 entitled Administration of Government and Chapter 33 entitled Police Department, so as to prescribe township residency requirements for municipal employees and police officers," is now passed on second and final reading, and that the township clerk be directed to advertise said ordinance or title thereof in the press, together with the notice of the date of passage of said ordinance according to law.
Motion?
Go.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The next ordinance. First reading, ordinance 1285-03. An ordinance authorizing the imposition of a municipal hotel and motel occupancy tax as authorized by Public Law 2003 C. 114. Motion?
Go.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Be resolved by the Township Council of the Township of Saddlebrook that an ordinance authorizing the imposition of a municipal hotel and motel occupancy tax as authorized by Public Laws 2003 C. 114, heretofore passed on first reading, be further considered for final passage at a meeting to be held on the 14th day of August 2003 at 7:00 PM or soon thereafter as the matter can be reached at the Municipal Building, 93 Market Street. And that at such time and place all persons interested, be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance according to law, with the notice of its introduction and passage on first reading, and of a time and place when and where said ordinance will be further considered for final passage.
Go.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just make a comment?
Sure.
With regard to the hotel tax that's coming about effective October of this year, I'd like to make a suggestion, as I did on Tuesday, to put that revenues into a surplus, dedicated surplus fund, so that no mayor now or in the future will ever be left with a shortfall that we have had come this January. As you know, we have $5,000 in surplus. It's totally irresponsible to have that kind of money in a surplus account. That money's found money to the township, and I would like to see that we add an addendum to that and work with our auditors to dedicate those funds, which will be 25%, actually it'll be 1%, but 25% of the year, starting in October, to go into surplus, to rebuild our surplus in the community. Am I too loud for you, Joe?
No, I was saying the volume is...
I'll lower my voice.
No, he's got it too loud.
I think we have a commitment to do that, though.
Yes, Tuesday we committed, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
For our first reading, next one.
Okay, because it bothers me that this Public Law 2003 C. 114, how long have been in court?
Next one. The last one.
If I just make a comment, I believe that we discussed it on Tuesday in detail, and I believe that this ordinance is going to benefit the town. That's what we are moving forward with 1% this year from October 1st through June 30th, 2004. Then we are passing the ordinance, or we're trying to use the ordinance for a 3% starting July 1st, 2004 and on, which is going to bring revenues to the town. We estimate in a yearly basis of 1%, it will bring us $225,000 in revenues based on the rate occupancy of 75%. Therefore, if we calculate with the same numbers, when hopefully we have the month of July, we will start collecting $775,000, and again, based on a 75% occupancy rate, occupancy. What the mayor just mentioned is totally right. However, I would like just to be a little more careful with those monies, because those monies are going to be coming in a yearly basis. From next year on, I guess, it's going to come in a year after year. So we are going to build, and we're going to try to book, to book back the town in a good financial track. However, I don't know how, if any, form that we can elaborate in order to avoid the crisis that we were left with, the prior administration and not any mayor, whether it's a political year or not, to just deplete the surplus from the town, because the surplus for the residents that are watching us tonight, the surplus just covers this town in time of emergencies. So for such a long time, this town has just been running with $5,000. And for the size of this town, if anything happened, and thank God that nothing happened, we just got $5,000 to cover those expenses. So we will be running like crazy to try to get money to cover those emergencies. So hopefully in the future, we will be able to book in the right track to the town, and this will be a good income of revenue, which actually won't affect the residents, it's not coming out of taxpayers' money, it's not coming out of commercial properties, it's coming actually out of the gas, the people that are staying at those rooms, and this is a typical tax that has been implemented years ago in so many states, and hopefully, and finally, now the governor's signing into law, and we're just taking advantage of that. Thank you.
Next ordinance, first reading, 1286-03. A bond ordinance to authorize construction of a new police department headquarters in by and for the Township of Saddlebrook and the County of Bergen, New Jersey. Appropriate the sum of $2,100,000 to pay the cost thereof. Appropriate a state grant to authorize issuance of bonds to finance such appropriation. Provide for the issuance of bond anticipation notes, and anticipation of the issuance of such bonds be passed and adopted on first reading.
Go.
Second?
Second.
Go.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Kugler?
Yes.
Mrs. Mazur?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mr. Sadekase?
Yes.
Be resolved by the Township Council of the Township of Saddlebrook that a bond ordinance to authorize construction of a new police department headquarters in by and for the Township of Saddlebrook and the County of Bergen, New Jersey, to appropriate the sum of $2,100,000 to pay the cost thereof, to appropriate a state grant to authorize the issuance of bonds to finance such appropriation, and to provide for the issuance of bond anticipation notes, in anticipation of the issuance of such bonds, heretofore passed on first reading, be further considered for final passage at a meeting to be held on the 14th day of August 2003 at 7:00 PM or soon thereafter as the matter can be reached at the Municipal Building, 93 Market Street. And that at such time and place all persons interested, be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance according to law, with the notice of its introduction and passage on first reading, and of a time and place when and where said ordinance will be further considered for final passage.
Go.
Second?
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Kugler?
Yes.
Mrs. Mazur? Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mr. Sadekase?
If I can make a comment to the chair. This particular ordinance, I believe that we all agree that this is the right time to build a police department that is in total disrepair. And basically, we have to take the opportunity of the low rate, it's under 1% the bonds nowadays. If we have the place to build it, and the rates are so low, I believe that all of us agree that this is not better time than now to build that police department that they are being waiting, they were waiting for a long time. If anyone has been in the police department, they will find themselves that this is not a place to be for our police officers, and their safety is also our job. Thank you.
If I could just add, I would like to just state my commitment to the police department. It's long overdue from the chief, deputy chief, to all the police officers. You've worked very hard, you're very well-deserving, and I think I want to see some smiles out there. You guys should be real happy on that. All right? Congratulations.
Joe, this is finally a good thing that's coming along. We're going to stop spending bad money after bad money. I don't know how many times we repaired the roof or lost equipment because of leaks in the roof and everything else. The police department is so small, they don't even have room for their own records. And they're thankful that we're all working together and get this done for the betterment of the community.
Not only is it well deserved, it's well needed. We look forward to the new building going up. We look forward to the new building going up.
Mr. Chairman?
I just wanna comment, the day leases came down, the mayor was here. I just wanna remember leases tavern, I have memorabilia here if anybody wants to buy them, we could sell them, and they're out there at the clerk's office.
I'll add, through the chair, if I may, Mr. President, we will not have a bar in that. But let me, let me just say this, I commend the council, each and every one of you, for supporting me and listening to me and rant and rave for the police department. You supported me in it, you listened to me in it, and it's this type of atmosphere and government that makes Saddlebrook move forward, and I do commend each and every one of you on supporting me with this police department. And I do support the police department, as you do. Knowing the conditions and being a former police officer, I know that even though the adverse conditions they work under, they do a tremendous job for this community. They truly do. They, they work hard, they, and they always complain because cops always do that. But for the most part, it's going to be a very good police department, and I hope we, I hope we have it within the next four years so we can get going. We're, we're in a stages now of getting the conceptual designs made up. And again, I wanna thank my colleagues on that council. Thank you.
We will get your presence.
Yes, John, I'll put your name in lights. You got it.
Yes, resolution number eight will be voted on separately.
And not new, official, resolution number eleven? If it's.
Yes.
All items listed with an asterisk, to be reviewed and non-controversial by the Township Council, and will be approved by one motion. When we don't set the discussion on these items unless the council members have a question. In which case, an item will be removed from the consent agenda considering its null sequence on the agenda. One motion signifies that the resolutions, receiving followers, respondents, report and approval of application of this.
Comment? Just, just one comment, and still, I'm not happy with the budget report, and hopefully I will elaborate later on, but those reports gotta be more easy to read and actually gotta be more concise, and basically, every month, everyone, everyone should receive that report, and I don't think that is acceptable right now the way it's coming.
Motion? Separate? Second?
Oh, separately? Yes.
Okay? Local?
Yours?
All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution number eight, to be voted on separately, is resolution authorizing purchases over $1,000 to be approved.
Motion?
Second?
Local?
That's number eight, right?
Yes.
Just, just a quick comment, I, I think that through the business administrator, we should have, and I believe that we spoke already, that we should have some procedures in order to follow through with these purchases over $10,000 that every single head, over $1,000 that every head department should follow. It should be a more, I would say, simple way to follow through, so every, everybody, yeah, everybody should have, should be consistent because the way they're coming right now with the, with the quotes, I don't think they're, are the best way. So basically, if we just implement something, it will be better for the, for the town.
Mr. Cook, on resolution for over $1,000?
Yes.
Mr. Kugler?
Yes.
Mrs. Mazur?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Nope.
Mr. Sutikas?
Yes.
Resolution number 11, appeared by Council President Sutikas, whereas firefighters play a critical role in public safety, whereas classes are offered to provide training and advanced skills to Bergen County firefighters at the Bergen County Law and Public Safety Institute and the police fire and EMS academies, whereas the New Jersey State Legislature is now, now considering Assembly Bill 3323, which requires county colleges to award college credits to firefighters for certain courses completed in county fire academies. Whereas under this bill, county fire academy and county college will be required to work jointly to identify courses at the county fire academy, which offer a curriculum similar to that of courses included in the county colleges' fire science program. And therefore be resolved that the mayor council of the Township of Saddlebrook hereby supports the passage of Assembly Bill 3323 and encourages all state legislators in both houses to support the firefighters of New Jersey by giving them the opportunity to gain college credits for class instructions that they receive to enhance their firefighting techniques and life-saving skills. Be further resolved that a copy of this resolution be forwarded to the office of the governor of the state of New Jersey and state legislators in District 38.
Motion?
So.
Second?
I agree with this vote. I don't know if we should put an asterisk on it to see if it can be retroactive because most of our fire department, almost everyone, is qualified for everything, and some of these people took these courses two or three years ago, and if it's possible to make it retroactive, so all those guys would get the credit rather than from here on in.
No objection, no matter.
No objection.
All in favor?
Both.
Resolution number 13 is to authorize the mayor and clerk to enter into a contract with the County of Bergen Health Department for the year 2003.
Motion?
So.
Second?
Discussion? I'm going to abstain from this resolution. As I stated on Tuesday, I, I personally need more information before going into disagreement. There's a lot of information that, that needed to be given to, to me before voting on this one, and I'm gonna abstain on this one until I get more information.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Kugler?
Yes.
Mrs. Mazur?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Abstaining.
Mr. Sutikas?
Yes.
Anyone else? Anything else on the agenda?
Yes, I've got something to add to this.
That's it.
You finished, John? I've been getting complaints on Leanhart Drive and Nellie Drive on that 80-degree turn. That's over there with the kids playing in the street and the cars are speeding down the road. I'd like to let it send to the chief to go and check the area, to see what we could do, maybe put up the sign Dangerous Curve 10 miles an hour or whatever, to slow the traffic down. Also, Floral Lane has been repaved today, which is gonna become a racetrack, and lately we've been having a lot of tractor trailers running, coming up and down that road. Years ago, we did have a sign posted for five-ton limit trucks, which is not there anymore. We'd like to have that put back, plus the truck ramp signs on Midland Avenue directing the trucks on which way to go. And last but not least, recently I went out with the graduating class of 2003 Saddlebrook High School. I must commend the parents and the students, they were unbelievably well. Behaved, thanks. We had comments from Holiday Inn, not only from the Holiday Inn, but from the comedians that were there and the hypnotist, and then we had the boat ride, and they were commended by the people who owned the boat. It was a night that went quite well, and it was 123 students who had a great time, and my hat is off to the class of 2003.
Were you the chaperone?
I was one. Your son couldn't make it that night.
Hey, John, you said it was an 80-degree turn. Where, on Leanhart, and there was?
Leanhart Street and.
80-degree turn?
Eighty, 90 degrees.
Oh, 90?
Yeah, 90.
No, but you, you're talking about on Leanhart?
Leanhart and Nellie Drive.
Oh, okay.
And Nellie.
And there's a, cars usually parked right near the corner. I just talked with the chief a little bit about it.
Oh, okay.
I wanted, I wanted to have a letter sent, and then I will leave with him on.
Joe, before we close, I would just like to make a comment or end or suggestion to anyone in the audience or any future residents that would like to come up to the podium, to please use some discretion sometimes with some of your comments. There are young children out there that do watch, and I would just like you to, you know, think twice sometimes, some of the words that are being used out there. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes. Right here, I have in front of me a list of special meetings that are gonna be called for July 14th, 17th, 21st, 22nd, and 24th. I regretfully are going to have to accept that letter. However, I sent a letter to the council president to state that I wasn't gonna be able to be this month. Due to personal reasons, I'll be out of town, and I would love to be part of the discussion on the budget. Last minute, we're running with all these special meetings, last minute. One, two, three, four, five meetings, when we actually have too many months, several months. No one meeting has been called in the last two, three months about the budget. So I sincerely regret because as every single council member knows, I've been, I've been very vocal about the budget, and actually, I feel bad that I'm not gonna be part of the process. I just wanna let you know, no matter what happened on the budget, I inform you before of the tax points that are going up. But no matter what happened, when they do this in a special meeting, I'll still make my comments on the month of August, even though that it might be kind of late back then, but I believe that it will be my duty to inform the residents how all these tax points and why are going up, and what do I think that should be the solution in order not to get these tax points, or high increased tax points in the future. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I, I just got one, one thing, very quickly. By time this is aired on SBC TV, many people will be coming back from vacation. We have August 5th is the National Night Out. We invite all residents to come down to the police department parking lot, and all those in the audience here to participate in the National Night Out, and we do have a proclamation we'll have on record with regard to that. So please, if you have an opportunity, come on down, it's a good night out, meet the police officers, and see some of the new technology that we have available to us. Thank you.
Motion both?
Motion.
Second?
I'm sure you are.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Vote.